May I make a motion after minutes from September 21st? Will the meeting be approved?
Thank you, sir.
I did see some.
Okay. We'll go ahead and say it then.
Well, I don't know if you want me to go through all of them or not, or if you want me just to handle it.
And if it's nothing, if it's mostly grammatical or...
There is spelling and grammatical. And then one section under the financial services. I wasn't sure exactly where that was going. So if you want me just to give you my document.
What about fine?
It's not really anything major. It's mainly just spelling and grammar and just some corrections.
Yeah, I thought it was probably. All right, but what about you, Dawn?
No, it's the same thing. It's okay. She's got it covered.
The financial, okay.
We live with the grammar now, so we can't tell.
Yeah. I think it's job security.
That's true.
They're all intentional. Yes. Okay, let's make a motion to accept the minutes with stuff in these changes in place.
Somebody.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, move on. My report is pretty short here. I feel like we were just together recently. We're going over some important policies today, but as many of you guys have probably seen in your email or have heard, we're losing our fearless leader back to New England. Manny has been, he came in at the most perfect time to our community and organization and for staff. And I don't know how we can express how much we're going to miss you, how thankful we are for you. And I want to go on record today, I know and others who've been joining here, thank you for getting us to the point that we are at today. You had a lot of work to do and a lot to overcome, and we cannot say thank you enough. We'll miss you. Anyone else? Okay, and so also what we will be discussing, I think it'll be a new business item that we'll add as next steps on executive director search here. Kind of the agenda always kind of happen hand in hand, so we'll add a bullet point for ED search here and discuss that as a board here in a little bit. Okay, Manny, I'll hand it over to you.
Well, October's a very busy time for the library and children's department. We have our fall festival, which is this Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., 1:00 p.m., sorry. Football game, I believe, is at 3:30, so plenty of time to go home and watch football. But the children's department is all excited. We're going to have three food trucks there, Ario Cheese Wagon, nothing but blunt cakes and Tasty Spun.
Spizzy Spun.
Spizzi Spizzy Spun. They will be present. We'll have vendors down there, and the weather looks to be warm that day as opposed to today. So I know they're looking forward to that. Also spectacular. I know that coincides with Friends event on the 25th, but I know children's will be there handing out candy, which they normally do and have a tent. I know it's well attended. Last year was pretty packed there. So they also, the teens have a Halloween concert coming up, or Halloween event, a karaoke event, which I think is on the 24th, 24th, in the teen room. Reference Sarah, who's here too. She's been doing excellent, really glamping in. Have some wonderful programs coming up. I know the Taylor Swift disco was a big hit, and I hope, I hope it happens again in May because I know there were a lot of Swifties that were coming up when they were returning their headsets saying, oh, we want it again, we want it again. So we were thinking around 150 were there dancing. And kudos to our three DJs that night, including the summer. Everyone had a lot of fun. It was Welton and Chelsea at the cafe open, and that was big business. And then Sarah had three tables of friendship bracelets, and it was just swamped with kids. And you had the patience of, I mean, you were right, so.
They were cute.
Yeah, they were all having a good time and dancing. And it was all ages too. There were moms there, dads, there was a dog there. So it was, it was really cool. A big program that we have coming up is the Annabelle Smith Literary Festival, and that is going to be on October the 26th. And that is from 9:30 to 1:30. The cafe will be open during that time. This year's event, we have, I'm just going to reiterate in here, breakout sessions for authors hosted by Frank X. Walker, the first African-American Kentucky poet laureate. Also Francis Figart and author Jeremy Lloyd will be there as well. So we're looking forward to that. So thank you for Friends, for all the help that you do in making these things possible. We're tweaking it from last year, including the names, so we're looking forward to that day. And I don't think there's a football game that day, so there's no excuse for anyone not to attend. Tomorrow, we have focus on seniors, and that's going to be held in the main gallery. And I believe it's about Medicare tomorrow, so that's usually unpopular. Let's see. I wanted to point out the cafe. We have a new volunteer, and her name is Abby, and she is precious. And Chelsea has been working with Abby. She was there working today. She's doing a great job. She has aspirations for working at a cafe or coffee shop one day. So she's, she's been great. So if you see her, just say hello to Abby. We're so excited to have her there.
I thought that was a great idea, doing that. Are we going to continue?
That's my plan. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah, and Chelsea, I know, I don't know how you have it formulated, but you could probably create an official internship, like with Merrill High School and the other high schools, and they get certain credit for it.
Okay.
If you have it formulated like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Middle College.
The display has changed, but last month for the Taylor Swift, we had, well, we still have the disco ball. The disco ball is still hanging, and we're going to keep them because in December, the letters of Santa will be the 1970s. So they're thinking of having like a shag carpet down, have the disco ball. Goes with the 70s. We did also say goodbye to one of our longtime staff members, Martha Lee Beasley. And I know Rebecca, who's off today, she and her team have interviewed candidates and actually selected one that's just gone through the process, the hiring process at this point. So one of the things we did, boy, a couple of weeks ago, Lauren and Anjaya and myself, we met with stakeholders, key stakeholders from Blount County, Alcoa, and Merrill. They have monthly meetings, and we were invited to go speak with them. I thought the meeting and the conversation was extremely positive. They had some really, really interesting and good questions. And what I got out of it at the end is they want to see this library continue to grow. And you know, even though I won't be here, I know that it will grow. So they know that this is an absolute gem, a jewel of our library, and they just want to see it continue. So I, I don't know, Lauren, Anjaya, if you wanted to speak on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think it was just, it was good affirmation that they care about the library and the staff and the community utilizing it. They were very interested in the different programming. They were very impressed with the statistics from reads and kind of everything that we've accomplished with the size of staff and everything since COVID. And so I thought it was a great meeting. We've never been at that in our local meeting before, and it was a good, it was a good staff. And I commend Manny for kind of really putting this out there in that way.
So did you get really impressed enough to fund it more?
I think we got our, we got our funding for the year already.
Like, this is future, so.
We did talk about and discuss the future, you know, and with new services, we'll need additional staff. We kind of threw that on their radar for now, for them to be prepared, this is coming. That will lie.
Yeah, I would say there's strong interest in what's going to develop in the basement and how that will tie into the strategic plan. They like the strategic planning process that we're about to enter in. And there is an emphasis on making sure that it is sort of in the community downstairs in the library versus some things in the past. So they said to give a heads up on large things like that ahead of time to add it to the budget, so that was really positive sounding.
Was there any kind of agreement between the three communities? And how did that go?
So we did draft up a new document, and we presented it to the three stakeholders, and they didn't seem to have any issue with it, so they're going to work on it on their end.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, they seemed, yeah, they weren't upset.
They talked to each other?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
At this meeting, and it's good, they all sounded on board.
And then following that meeting, we had another meeting. We had, and this was a brainchild of Andy. We had members of the foundation, the Friends, and the board, and then the library administrators. We're going to meet every quarter, just kind of discuss what's going down. You know, the goal behind it, and it's very smart, just to have everyone on the same page. So there's no, nothing crazy and nothing, no one's going broke. And so I got to give credit for Andy for corralling all of us together, and it, it works. So kudos on Andy for doing that and asking some really good questions. And out of that was, you know, we're looking at a master plan here, and the first thing to establish is our request for a proposal or RFP. So that's like the first proxy, the first step on getting this master plan. So and there was a gentleman there from the Friends that has experience with RFPs. And there are consulting companies that specialize in public libraries. I strongly recommend going that route because they've been there, they've done that, they know the language, they, you know, you want somebody, you want a group like that, not a consulting firm that has not dealt with libraries. Libraries are very unique, extraordinary, they really are. And people get very passionate about public libraries, so. Anjaya, other things, the book return project officially kicked off construction today. However, they're waiting for, let's get the right.
Erosion specialist.
The erosion specialist. He will be coming this week, but all the permits are full, so they should be beginning construction later this week or early next week. So they're just waiting for this person to come by.
What does he have to do with removing the?
Step one in all accounting construction projects is that say have erosion control.
Exactly. I mean, you have to have it, but.
And so, and they won't let you continue on without it, yeah.
So before we get to finance, I just want to briefly say how much I love my time here. So take it away.
All right, so you might have all noticed that the financial report looked a little bit different this time around. And we have a lot of different differences between this budget and this year's budget in the way that it was arranged in previous years. So I have broken it out so that we can clearly track things. Because there was a lot of differences, I stated at the end that if you had questions, please email it, because otherwise I could spend the whole hour talking to you guys about that. I'm sure you'd love that, but maybe not tonight. So again, was there any questions on it? We are tracking well with how we're going through the year in terms of both how we're spending money within our operations and our personnel lines, as well as the revenue that we're pulling in. You'll also notice that now this year on the operations spreadsheet that has a monthly breakdown, you will see a capital component, and that's because that's where the foundation funds has been moved to, that cost center. So you'll be getting a tracking of how that money is spent down over the project. You'll also notice that the line 335, which is usually what we are having in the line in the operations for the general services, well, that has been moved into capital so that it's kind of like our contingency. If we have to make any purchase order changes or something like that, we will, we will use that line, and then the director will need to go to commission to ask for funds to be put back so that general services have what they need to maintain our building. Any questions? Yes?
Can you explain the notes?
The notes to, on the revenue sheet?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So what is it? When you're looking at the revenue sheet, what is it? It says the appropriated total includes the foundation funds and the architecture carryover funds from last year, and that is put into the book return project line, and that is what makes that contribution and gifts line. So if you look at the appropriated line, it says $298,629. That's at the top part, the contribution and gifts line. Well, I didn't want you to think that that is actually what the county gave us. What that consists of is the foundation funds from this year, a carryover from last year, and the $45,000 that the finance department has put into our budget. So I wanted to break those out so that there was transparency on how we're spending those money down, that money down. And because this is the first time that the finance department has said, hey, no, you're actually going to be making this amount of money, I wanted to also clearly track that so that we could be better suited in for our projections for next year's budget.
And the carryover number two of $45,000 is from where?
No, that, that's not the carryover. The carryover is 9,800. That's, there's a comma, so 50, uh, this year, 24 carryover, comma, and 45,000. It's just a further explanation. It's just, it's basically what I just said. Yeah, so.
So it's all referred to in one?
Exactly. It's just, it's just really breaking out what that line is so that step by step, you can see where we're getting these totals. Because that is not part of the MOE. That is the main thing to take away. That is not part of the MOE.
Where's the fiscal year at? Is it calendar year or calendar year or no?
No, it's June 30th. And in saying that, yes, this, so under current finance leadership over at the county, I think we actually had the hard close June 28th. But the numbers don't stop moving around until usually, I think this year it was August, previous to that it was an October deadline.
I want you to add, next to new breakout, a lot. Thank you for taking the time to do that. Is there anything that concerns you about the new?
Well, so after, I was, I was first alarmed when I saw the finance department's assignment of 45,000. However, what that actually is, is so every year we have actually made more money than we have thought. And what she is trying to do is actually make sure that if in the instance we wanted to go to the commission and say, hey, we want to pull these revenues in, we have an easier way of doing it.
I remember that discussion.
Yeah. So no, at this stage, I think we're tracking very well for the year, and if that ever changes, the director and the board will know.
Does anyone have any questions for Manny or Anjaya with their report? I have one question, Liz, and was, if, do you have any recommendations you can connect with a client of consultants that other folks have used for strategic plans? Okay, thank you.
For strategic plans or director services?
Shoot the blow. About that. Currently, the strategic plan, how we are going to hire consultants to help us go through our strategic planning process.
I think I can, we haven't had, I don't think we've had anybody do that in our region, but I know in the state we have an all-else.
Because mostly ours is, it's with the basement and everything, the whole building.
Right, right.
Okay. Hey, Bill, would you like to give us an update from the foundation?
We did release a check to the county for 253,000 for the book drop. And then I believe that you, I don't know how it worked, but that's where the one's going to stay, it was with the county, and the book drop will get built from that. And so we're real excited about that. We're also from the meeting that Manny mentioned with Andy administration, the Friends administration and foundation. One of the things that came from that was to take a look at our consistent, just look at marketing, that our logo is a panoramic view of the library. You just had yours redone, which is, which is great. We're probably going to talk to Visual Voice just for their recommendation. Do they think that this is a good way to, that the Friends and the foundation should have at least a similar look to the library? So you know, when you see them, that you're looking part of the family of the library. So we're going to be looking at that. Just to mention that Manny's been great, and the foundation has really appreciated his leadership. It's made our job super easy. So we know when we get a request at the foundation level that it's already been through you guys. Trustees have already approved it, the administration wants it. That's the only reason we exist, is to give the library the funds that we collect. So we just want to make sure that it's, it's the highest priority. So we do appreciate that, and we're nice.
Question, Bill. The money that you're giving to the county, is it going into some kind of account that is going to be drawing interest?
Oh, I have no idea what they give.
I mean, it's just not going to sit in the county's funds while it could be in our funds, drawing interest for us.
With?
I don't know.
So.
It has to be with the county. It has to be with the county for them to pay the bills.
I understand that, but they're not moving ahead. There's already a delay, so.
Well, that doesn't have anything to do with the county. That has to do with the.
That's the contractor.
That's the contractor.
Oh, it's the contractor that's delaying? Okay, sorry.
And I mean, they'll be getting the payoffs, you know, and be drawing it out of that account pretty regularly, so yeah. It'll be with the county. So the way, with the delay is the erosion control hasn't been set up, which the county then comes out and approves, ready to move on, where I could happily speak really well to this.
What you said.
I mean, we can't have stethament, contracted materials, et cetera, running into our parking lot, folks rolling over it, running into the creek, the greenway.
I understand that totally. I don't understand the delays. That's just, that's just our, our.
It's just a minor delay.
It's a minor delay. No, there's no way.
I think we can have a conversation, you know, things down the pan, but I think it's just a minor delay right now with them setting it up, yeah. I don't think you guys are concerned when it's speaking to the contractor? No.
Sorry.
Bill, thanks for your report. I really like the meeting that we had and talking about consistency with the branding, and so I hope you guys are looking into it and really encourage it, have a good time with it. Okay, Friends of the Library, hi, Laurie, would you like, it's not Vandy, but.
No, I'm not Vandy. I'm Lori Smalling, and I am the Ursula Vice President, shows up when Manny can't. First off, we're, and these notes are from Vandy. I said, you gotta get me talking, hold on. So we're very excited to celebrate our 50th anniversary of the Friends of the Library next week on the 25th. We are having a party. We have a great plan for a wonderful evening. It's at Pellicia State Community College. We anticipate a good turnout. I think it's just about sold out. It's going to be catered by Pellicia State Community College art students, tableaus at a mocktail bar. We're also having a silent auction, and all sales will go to support the Friends. Next week is also National Friends of the Library Week, and we anticipate a joint resolution from our three supporting governments to mark the occasion. Friends organizations throughout the U.S. are committed to supporting their local libraries through financial support for library programming and by expanding community support. If you're not a member of the Friends of the Library, you should be. So see me after the meeting. Anyway, also on the 26th, which is Saturday, and Manny already talked about the Annabelle Smith Literary Festival. It's from 9:00 to 1:30 that day. And the only thing I have to add is that Frank X. Walker's kind of a big deal. He's the guy who coined the term "aprolaction." And then we're very sorry to learn that Manny is leaving us. He's been a wonderful partner to the Friends. We hate to see you go. And you know, we know that change brings opportunities, and so we're, we're looking forward to that. In the meantime, we will continue to support our mission through book sales and membership, and we expect to begin our own strategic planning process, basically as soon as we get this party behind us. It's like the thing that's making everybody hold their breath right now, so.
Thank you, Laurie. And I'm sure you'll be hearing, I'm excited that you guys appear and related to Vandy. I think there's been some discussion about partnering on some of our searches here, so if you, are you going to hang around for the rest of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, first. Okay, Liz, welcome.
I wanted to say thank you to Lauren for being at the trustee workshop. I think we had a good workshop, we had a good crowd despite the weather. It always rains for some reason, every time. But we had a good crowd at Cross School, the Arts of the Library, so thanks. It was a great job. Yes, pleased we had a good turnout. I sent my reports ahead of time, of course. Always reporting, and a good part of what we do is training, so of course we take up our training sessions. And there are several coming up, both in person and virtual and hybrid. We're trying to make it convenient for everyone to be able to attending it as required, continue the education hours that they must have as being part of the reading system. So we had a great summer reading conference also. I know it seems probably to our library staff who just finished and are catching their breath after a huge summer reading. I know it seems probably to our library staff who just finished and are catching their breath after a huge summer reading event this past summer. But there's no time like the present to continue planning for the future. So for the twenty-twenty-five, um, summer reading conference we held at Park Circle, it was, it was a good turnout there as well. The theme is going to be "Color Our World," so lots of fun things to do with that. We are reminding all of our boards, you all, I think we're okay, I need to get contact information for you to update the board appointment forms. Also, I did submit your annual maintenance and effort agreement, thank you for getting that in early. Um, and so I'll add that to you all, uh, when we get a copy, when, when it comes back to me. Actually, man, I'll send you a copy when I get it. I think it may have been one of us actually got it for you already, so thanks for doing that early, we always appreciate that deadline, October thirty-first. Let's see. Just a reminder, we have in Chromea glasses, a kit, uh, that are colorblindness, um, glasses, for libraries to be able to check out. We've had those for quite a while, but Laurie Tomstark, continued education coordinator, highlighted that in the trustee workshop. So if that is something that any of our libraries would be interested in, you are welcome to check that out, um, through our office, and you can keep it. And so folks who might be considering the idea of purchasing those, it's a large purchase, they might want to be able to try them on beforehand. So that's something we're having, you know, a report this, this month as well. We're conducting these orientations for new board members as well, and sending out links for trustee certification program. That's really what we're doing, go, 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 it's a busy time.
Liz, it's good to see you today, let's make sure you connect with, um, Richard, who else are you meeting? Is it just Richard?
Uh, I think Becca and Richard and also Mr. Stewart.
Okay. If you guys don't mind hanging after that. The trustee workshop was wonderful, your staff, um, your team is just so passionate. And the one thing that came out of it that I spoke to Manny about, and I'll let this continue on with our next directive. I want staff to feel like they can go to any training possible, in person, digitally. If there's any conflicts or anything that Manny said, you guys take full advantage of that, but let's continue doing that. Cause, gosh, just being there and seeing it all, it's like I was taking furious notice of like all everything available, like the glasses, et cetera. Thank you for that opportunity and, and keep us, keep pushing it out there, so, yeah. Okay, I think, um, last, uh, moving on, last time we asked, we're going to strike the committee updates from the agenda moving forward. There might likely be like a selection committee based on our next conversation, but if anyone, um, has anything they want to say here to that, otherwise we'll strike it from the agenda. Okay, let's move on to old business. In front of you is the emergency and safety plan that we reviewed in the last board meeting and had some corrections and some good points brought up. You guys are all taking time to read over the updated, um, plan, all entering motion here. I can end my review, okay. All right, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. I mean, distribution, I wondered why Alcola wasn't included in the distribution. Maribor gets a copy and, and County gets a copy, but Alcola City doesn't.
I would imagine because of the location, of the library being part of the county and then.
Partially on Alcola property, it's partially on Maribor's.
I think that is, is it partially in Alcola? It's serviced by the MPD.
Everything there is Alco, is Alcola.
They, I mean, it's a good point, it's serviced by MPD, and I think that the, the Gluck County was caused of the personnel situation, but I mean, if, I don't, if there's no opposition, we can share it with them too.
I would just add it to the.
I don't see why not, yeah, and they'd appreciate it. Anything else that anyone has to add?
I, I do.
I'm sure.
I've always been curious as to why we closed, when rural city schools have closed. I know on the weekends, Manny, whenever, um, we've had inclement weather and the schools are already closed, that you, in consultation with, with the chairman, had, had to do that. I, I guess the schools are dealing with different situations. We're not having to deal with buses or transportation or anything like that. So I just was, uh, maybe thinking that since our director is already doing that on the weekends, why we can't give that job to the director all the time? And not just base it on the school system. Manny, can you think in the last three years since you've been here, when there's been a time that the schools have been closed and the library could have stayed open?
The only time that happened and the library was open was this year or last year, there were high winds. In Gluck County, it was a Friday, and we remained open.
Over hurricane, hurricane.
It was before the snow, it was before the, the, the snowstorm. I, I can't remember when, so now, last year. Last year.
But what about this past, what is your, how do you feel about this past closing?
I'm always about staff safety, and I come from a world where, and I'm going back to a world where inclement weather is, you're talking two, three feet of snow. And we would always be closed because the safety, we can't open a library if we have staff spinning out or, or just can't get out of their driveway. So I've always been on the staff's side when it comes to inclement weather. I mean, I'm one that thought we should be, I, and I was wrong, I thought we should have been open during the snow. But then when I drove here and noticed that nothing was up, I understood, but my mentality is, you can get to work. Uh, but for this, I, you know, I thought about the, the safety of, of our staff, because they come from all over, they come from Greenback, they come down near the Walin area. And I was worried about their safety getting to work. So that was my, my mindset. I really wasn't thinking about, I was being selfish and thinking about the staff, because I always had their safety paramount, um, first and foremost, so. I, I was fine with the closure because of.
You know, Gluck County government used to do that, they would close when Maribor City was closed. But I think now, don't, correct, don't they make their own decision now?
Each department makes their own decision.
Yeah.
Even, like, the mayor doesn't make it for the whole county.
The whole county.
Like, Madam Clerk can make it for the clerk's office, and Scott can make it for the trustee's office, and Phyllis can make it from her office.
And that's, that's great, to have the judgment of the director doing that, so, yeah. With consultation from the chair. Cause my first year, we were closed on a Saturday because of snow.
Right.
Which was the right call.
Richard, do you have something to add?
The only thing I was going to, I was a wind commander for installation, so we controlled libraries, the hospital, the whole thing. And any decision to close was with safety in mind. And you do that in collaboration with the police making assessments of the road, you do that with healthcare providers. You do that, I mean, it's a whole, we would have a whole teleconference with all of these separate agencies getting inputs prior to making that decision. So I'm surprised that it's, it's delegated down, because they don't have the access to the information that a consolidated body would. But if that's the way the county does it, is delegated down, I'm just surprised they do from an emergency management perspective. Cause from an emergency management perspective, you want to make sure you're assessing all the information to make that call, and it is with safety in mind. Cause you don't want, when, when, when the state police and the local police say, "Stay off the roads," you don't want an entity going, "Oh, I disagree with that, I want my people on the road."
I can't see that happening in Gluck County. I mean, I can't see somebody bucking, if somebody tells them, "Stay off the roads."
Delegated, there is that possibility, it is left to the discretion of each individual entity, that is a very high degree of possibility that could happen. It's left up to those individuals. But again, that's up to the, if that's the way it's done, then, that's fine, I'm just saying I'm surprised.
I know Dr. Went said, when he makes the calls for Maribor City Schools, he does counsel with police.
Exactly.
Uh, and. Yeah, so, you know, I think that's a good point, and for us to maybe state, you know, for you to counsel, for the director to counsel, but, and the police, um, maybe the, but, um. And that would be all, probably all three, um, departments, right? Because you, you'll have employees coming from one, Alcola and Maribor. Who else would you suggest counseling to be, but besides the P?
Well, if you're thinking for snow, well, I think if you have snow, you're closed, no matter, as a highway department for standing, but.
You, you don't have any snow room, right?
Yeah, I, that's true.
Sometimes the parking lot here is in much worse shape than the schools are, because they have equipment that they can scrape and we don't. So I can't, I just brought that up just because of.
Oh, you're right.
Giving them, giving our director more authority to do that.
The, the safety also, so we would start with staff, but the other reason we did is because if the school was closed, we thought that that was leadership saying, "The roads aren't safe." And we were worried about parents going, "Well, the library's open, I'll try to go there and get the kids out of the house." And then, we have the issue of a lot of kids on the roads in what could be an unsafe. And our parking lot in itself sometimes can have, so. That was, I have to say, when the schools closed, that's what we were like, okay, we don't want parents to think, "Oh, well, the schools are closed, but the library's open, so let's head out there."
But they go to the mall anyway, doesn't it? They don't close the mall.
Stephanie, do you have a recommendation of language, um, and then?
I just, I think we just take out that first whole section and say that, "Gluck County Public Library Director will consult with the Chair of the Board, will consult with the police departments, um, and whoever they need, he needs to consult with, he or she." And I'm, I'm not passionate about this either way, I just feel like that gives our director a little more flexibility, um, one way or the other. The director's not giving any calls from various staff members, saying, "Now, my driveway's on a hill and there is no way, and I'm going to shove up the road." So you get those kinds of individual calls, that's my guess, is why Gluck County does what they do, because each little department has their own people that they know where they live. They know, chances are Sam Jones isn't going to make it in, because he lives out in Lower Suburbia, so, you know, I think it, this, more hands-on, I think, is the, the director's here, is very aware of who, who his people are, and who, where they live.
So would you recommend some language around that, like, um, director has the authority to, you know?
Based on the condition, I would, I would put, based on the condition of the recommendation, with somebody who's had some authority as far as the parking lot is concerned, the condition and sidewalks. I mean, it's just slushy out there, it's one thing, but if you've got freezing rain and, you know, sidewalks, parking lot, those, you're just opening yourself up for all kinds of issues, so.
Manny and Manny, I think Stephanie has a good point, it's like, the director of Gluck County Schools, the director of Maribor, the department heads, the counties, like, they have that authority to make that decision. And I think maybe that's what you're wanting to give the director, if I'm, you know, and our situation may be different. And so how does everyone, I don't know, if we need a motion, maybe to amend this, um, about how we would handle it, or if we want some more discussion right now?
I think first of all, we need to agree on how we want to work, not probably, now, just take us as first sentence, and if we can put in, how we want to work.
So just willing to have the discretion of the director in consultation with the local government authorities and the panel of board chair.
Yeah, if you think local government agrees on it. Would you guys like to see the language revised, um, and look at this next week, or, I mean, next month, or would you be satisfied with that?
I think we can, cause I think they had this issue for you.
I agree, so. So what, so what we'll go ahead and do is we'll, um, some of them will revise the language and send it back out, we'll add Alcola into the distribution list. Is there anything, any other revisions in the plan that you guys saw before we kind of say, "Let's table this"?
I have a couple other questions. On the emergency supplies, where are they stored? That was a problem before, we didn't know where anything was.
Yeah, um, that's something that we have worked on, continuing to work on when it comes to supplies. When it comes to the list here, we have some that are located in our custodial closet, um, portable chairs are everywhere. I mean, it's something that we continue to work on, trying to find a central location for everything. Like the toolbox is in there.
Do we have dehumidifiers?
There is a dehumidifier, yes.
Portable generators?
I don't think we have a portable generator on, on property. Something we would have to purchase.
So are we going to buy all these things that are on the list?
Things that we don't have, I would think we would need to purchase them, that's what I would recommend. Uh, the dehumidifier would be one of them, but we have the gloves now, we have the bags.
Yeah, I don't know what kind of hope we're talking about, but.
You recommend keeping them all in a central location as well, with a list?
Well, what happened was when we had the flood, we didn't know where anything was, and we were scrambling to get rooms and anything else. There was no way to get water out of the building.
Would that be different now that you have county?
So we have nowhere, plastic sheeting and that kind of stuff is important.
It's, it's, to help with, I would think you would also, I mean, if you're storing chemicals or other things, you should have tertiary, tertiary relations.
Yes.
That's something such a active concern to you.
The chemicals, the gloves, the bags, that has to, has been supplied by the county. Yeah.
So they might have some guidance to, um, what to spend to get them up in that community.
Let's, since we are tabling this plan, let's look into some of these items, let's come back and see what we need to purchase. And kind of a plan of where they're going to be located and, um, kind of, let's circle back to this.
On the evacuation plan. It says to go to the basement. Can you get to the basement? I mean, the last time I, I tried to go down, couldn't get down the steps.
So we actually, with Corporal Royville, we do, uh, fire alarm, and with, uh, risk management, we also did a, um, exercise on when it comes to a tornado. And part of that process is, it's a procedure. You would have, one, number one, a staff member announce on the intercom that there's a tornado nearby. Another staff member would go over to the stairwell that leads down to the basement to use their badge. So first, the top, the door on the, the main level would be propped open. Downstairs, there'd be a staff member that would open up that door using their badge, so patrons can get to safety.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll take, we'll take a look at these revisions and, um, then staff will get back to us on the supplies to look at this next month. Is there anything that we need to have this, like, in place with M O R E in good shape with not? M O R E in good shape was not having this completed right now?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Let's move on to the digital platforms policy that was reviewed last board meeting. And also corrections were sent out to your email revised policy. Would anyone like to make a motion for the... I want to call this decision being a policy so bad.
Somebody?
Thank you. Okay, any discussion? Okay, very none, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you guys. I think that this was a good policy, but I saw the work put into it. Okay, moving on to new business. We've got, we've got some items to cover here. First, we'll, we'll kick off with the big one of the collection development and heating materials policy. And I'm going to turn this over to you to give an update on kind of what we're looking at here.
Well, first, I just want to say when it comes to this policy, how proud I am of this board that really stuck to their guns over the past couple of years since I've been here. You have been nothing but fair, which is excellent. And just to continue that, so that, that's something I always, when I talk to colleagues up north and I do, just how proud that all of you, that I am of all of you, that really, you were very fair with everything and, yeah, that, that, that's terrific. Without jinxing anything, and I apologize if I do, but I guess I'm going to be here for it, but I'll watch on YouTube. We have been really...
I'll call you.
It's been very quiet on the, um...
Hey, not password, exactly.
Okay, it's been, it was an easy policy to go through, I'll say that. There weren't any major corrections. Just basically some grammatical here and there, but it's a solid policy. Yeah.
Well, I think too, you know, previously, we've, we really did a good job cleaning it up in the past. It worked. I think for the, for the fundamental purpose that it stands for, it puts a lot of, puts a lot of, I would say, work on the director as well. And then you, and Stephanie, you, you, and I know Dawn wrote a lot and et cetera. So, so just thank you all for that. And Manny, is there anything you want to point out on the policy? Or have, if anyone on the board would like to comment on it after reading it, taking some time to read it? Anything you want to point out, Manny?
No, I think it's a really, it's a great policy.
Okay.
I have a question on page six.
Six?
On the point, one you're monitoring on that paragraph, first paragraph, number one.
On page six?
Yeah, are we, we're talking about, hoping to...
That we, we're in new business, that was our first look at this policy. And then, you know, as always, you guys take some time to look over this and send in anything that you have to the, to Summer or Guy.
Yeah, just, uh, got some corrections, but they're just, I both and nothing much.
Okay. Well, so next month in November, we will take a look at this and vote on it. So moving on here, we are going to discuss 2025 building closures, which I've proposed to you in this, in the last page of your packet, the schedule. Manny, I'll get turned over to the conflicted general standard holiday. Anything that you know?
It's the same as last year, just the dates are, are different.
And so can we vote on this right now, or do we, does it need another? Okay. Does anyone have any comments on the proposed dates for the building closures? Okay, anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the building closure schedule for 2025.
Okay. Okay, all in favor? Any against? There's your building closure. Take off your, take off now. Okay, let's see. Okay, big topic that we, we need to discuss is we, we are going to have to head back and ask for some more funding. And so Manny, you want to, you want to go over kind of where you are with this service level agreement?
So I'm going to tag into Arjuna and Arjuna can go over.
So what this request in front of you is, is the request for us to go in front of commission and ask for the use of our library fund balance. Our library fund balance is currently $775,000. And our commissioners have actually made comment of that they'd like to see it used. And the fund balance is used for this specific type of thing, one-off, non-recurring expenses. This is ideal for this. So we believe that it'll be successful. It is the difference of $23,761 in savings. And if it doesn't come out of fund balance, that means we have to find it in our operations, which means we're looking at, if we pay year after year, we're looking at, starting at $17,700 and increasing, I believe it's two to three percent, but I haven't looked at the, is it 2.7? No, it's two. But increasing, so first year, 17.7, second year would be 19.2. For, you know, a cost of $130,000 versus if we can make it in one lump payment coming out of fund balance, it's $106,000. That also means that our automatic handler has service level coverage for the years that it needs that coverage until we decide what the next steps are, which are years two through seven. Any questions?
Does that include any savings from this year?
The first year's free. And that hasn't started until installation.
I move that we accept this proposal and send it to the county commission. Second.
All in favor? I, I think it's a great recommendation, so thank you for bringing this to us.
That was, that was one of the questions that the commissioner, that the budget committee asked of Arjuna and I, that it's kind of, so...
Thank you for listening to them and bringing that to us. It always helps, yeah.
Arjuna, I just have one, it's a bit more question, just, so the one-time contract payment upfront avoids the percent increase this year. So is it cost avoidance, not a cost savings? Again, a bit of a weird question, but it's actually a cost avoidance.
It's a cost avoidance.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on, there's, there's one item that we really need to spend some time discussing here. And I think first is we need to, as a board, decide if we'd like to accept Manny's resignation.
Is that an option? No.
But we have, and, you know, this puts us in, like Laurie said, a great opportunity for us. We're in a great position, so what's next for us? The last search, about two and a half years ago, maybe three?
Three.
Three. What was it? Was ran by a selection committee of, what was it, three members or four?
We had, let's see.
Four board members?
Four board members. And then we had some community members as well.
Four, five, ten members?
Yeah.
So my, I, I'd like to put a proposal on the table of, you know, this, this isn't necessary for us from a very different place of us to go through this, the, the large selection process that we went through. For those who are new to the board, maybe if you, you and Andy were to give Hannah some history on the number of days that it was and the work put in and kind of how you guys handled it, that might be helpful for the new board members to hear and see if we went ahead in that direction for our next path.
I have a, I have a document that I emailed out that has the steps that we took and the timeframe and what all we had to do and all that. So I'll, I'll email that out and give you all an opportunity to look at that.
Yeah.
I think that would be helpful.
I think it would be, and, and we can gather, and we will gather again next month. Let's do that. Let's take a look at that, gather next month, and then put some real thought into how you guys want to handle this move forward. Because we don't have to do it that way again. We can change things, we can do it that way. We got a great product out of it with Manny. But we are in a different place at the library now. You know, for new members, we had to make a huge culture change. We had to build relationships with the government officials. Instead, we've, we've been able to do that with Manny and others. So it's very different now. I did connect with Mary Mitchell, and he would like to be included. How they attended lunch with the, some of the actual candidates and got to know them ahead of time. So we, I'd like to honor that request. And so meantime, I think we need to get a nomination. I would like to propose nominating Arjuna as interim director with a 10% raise for her interim holding. We have a, if, if voted on, if we vote on this nomination, pass it, the, the job description has been emailed to me from the county that we will also send out to you with Stephanie's email for us to look at and see if we want to keep it the same or change it, which I think is something that we should look at. So if I can get a motion here, we need to actually take a vote on presenting Arjuna, who has very, has been proposed by Manny, who has been, I've spoken with her. She's very excited to take on the role. I think she is a great fit for it, and I, and I think Manny would agree. So if we can entertain a motion here.
Somebody?
Second. I think that's a great idea.
Any discussion?
Yes, I don't think, I don't think Manny increases enough. I think that's a very minimal amount for the job that she's going to have to do. Who knows the amount to lead the position? At least, at least 15 to 20 percent.
We, you know, we are very much welcome to, to discuss that. I just propose what we did last time, and so...
I think she had more than...
It was a 10 percent, yeah.
Yeah, 10 percent, it wasn't 10 percent, it was.
It was. Oh, no, it was a different?
I didn't, I didn't look at the percentage.
Okay.
What is it? I can find that out for you. What is it? I can, yes.
That's what was proposed, right?
No, I think it should be more.
Okay, so would we like to...
You have the savings of, of all of it, all of Manny's salary. So...
Would you like to make a new motion with the different...
I think we are discussing, yeah.
What do you guys think?
What is the percent difference between her and salary, man? I mean, rather than coming up with arbitrary, capricious percentages, you could look and see, okay, if she's going to be doing the job of that position, then what is the salary difference and what's the percentage?
She's moving some money.
Throwing out, throwing out 10.
She's doing a lot of that.
Arbitrary numbers.
Add into that, when you look at timelines, I mean, we, we provide director search documents as well, and you can have a great one from last time. But if you look at timelines, you're looking at, in your sort of level library like this, especially if you're doing a national search, I mean, depending on if you decide to do a level search committee or you decide to hire a consultant that comes in and does that whole thing, you're looking at potentially four to six months. So, yeah.
So what we did, the difference in her salaries is that...
So is it 21% difference? Yeah.
And I can tell you that they say, just general, they say for interim positions, it can range between five and 15%, but duration matters. So after three months, they're saying, so...
If you'd like, I could step over. I'm okay to be here, but... Who's going to do your job while you're doing Manny's job?
Me.
Oh, well, I'd like to come easy. I don't have a voice here, but I just go.
So what's, Arjuna, that guy, she is gay, but whose rule of thumb is that? Where's that come from? The five to 10 or 15 percent?
I can, I can look at what there is.
Is that an HR directive?
I believe that the county HR handbook now does have something about that, but I don't, I didn't pull that from there. I think I pulled, I'll tell you where I pulled that from.
Yeah, I know, so we can look at this, the way that now Mary Mitchell wants us to handle this is to vote on it tonight. And then we have to send a board email, then we took a vote, and this is our recommendation.
So then I would make a motion and then we increase it by the 15% contingent upon compliance with HR directives for the first three months, subject to increase to 20%.
That's exactly what Rebecca said. Same way, like, like.
So I have a motion.
Okay, do it again?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
I do have...
Thank you.
Arjuna, I don't want to make you uncomfortable or anything like that, but are there any provisions that, I don't know if you'd be interested or not, but if you were hypothetically interested in permanent position, are there any stipulations that state that if you serve as interim, you're not to be considered?
No, we, yeah, we also, yeah, and Arjuna was in this position last time, the last search. And so...
I appreciate the question.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I would like to just take a moment and say, I've got big shoes to temporarily fill. And I'm happy to say that Manny said that I can have him on speed dial. This is going to be the second time I've experienced this role. And we are completely different library. Our culture is so very different, and I want to see it continue in that vein and get stronger.
This is the second time we've been through it too.
No, yes. Trust me, I want to make it easy for all of us. So what is it? I want to say thank you very much for the nomination, the consideration. And I will wholeheartedly take it if you all, if you all give me the privilege. It will be an honor.
Well, the privilege is, I mean, you have it. It was an easy choice, and so please continue to keep the culture the same. Call in, call any of us, we are here for you. And so we'll work very closely together. And hopefully you enjoy the same beverages that Manny.
With, with Manny... When, when Manny gave me the news, if, if, uh, if I can take it to the central for a second, when Manny gave me the news, Papito was in his office, and Papito was sitting in, usually sits in his little bag, Papito is a dog. And Papito gets out of his bag and crawls into my lap for the first time ever. And so I'm like, oh my gosh, and I'm full of puppy endorphins, and I'm like, super, and I'm like, wait a, wait a minute. I'm like, are you firing me? Have you trained the dog to stop my blood? And then he goes, no, it's the other way around. And then my brain was overloaded with puppy endorphins and really sad things. Um, but Manny has done an amazing job with turning this organization, will turn around. I am finally to uh, to where I've always thought this library could be, and it is so exciting. And if the staff will have me, um, I'm here. So, thank you very much.
Okay, if you don't mind sending um out that, the motion, I think that was a great motion, Richard pending um, a director will email me that, so I can send that direct, exact motion over to Mayor Mitchell. And if you don't mind hooking up with us to give us um just the documents, because I wasn't part of the, I was part of the search but not a dissection committee um as well.
I have a notebook.
She has much more thorough. I will send you our already checklist recommendations and guidelines, but yes.
And I just went through that notebook three weeks ago and shredded.
You did this!
All of the applications from everyone, three weeks ago.
It's okay, I want work, work.
Three weeks ago.
Yeah.
Um, Laurie, something to pass on to Manny, we'll discuss is there's gonna be some expenses related to this that we would love to work with you guys on, if you're interested. Um, it's so important that we have support here to find the right candidate, and we are kind of strapped with what county resources there are for us in this recruiting process.
Uh, you know, I'm only one voting member on the front's board, but I don't see a problem.
Okay. Okay, I think the last part of the.
The next, next meeting, we ought to come back with recommendations for.
Yes, yes, I think we can do, and I don't really know, how do you, so with the old board members, the new board members reading over the history and kind of learning the selection process, um, I think they need time to digest that, and then bring, we can bring recommendations on how to handle it. Um, or do you recommend something different?
I think people should have recommendations
Yeah.
on who they want on the board. I mean, you, you have to appoint
Okay.
at least three, three members beside yourself, if you want to be part of it. And then, but four is definitely the right, the right amount. I would know well. And, and three or four, or five others, when you want them out of the month.
Okay.
You're talking about the selection process?
Yes.
Okay.
And you might want to refer to the ballots too, which should outline committee, possibly our committee appointments.
Okay.
Yeah, do we have the, there's the form that we had, that we put out the first time? So if we have that, we can look at that too.
Yes.
Yeah, and you know, at, my apologies, this happened last week and sadly, and then I left town and drove in today. Um, and so it's, everything's been fast moving. The first order of business was getting Agnene taken care of with Mayor Mitchell, so I'm, I'm very open to any approach. Um, and also frankly, I am out traveling all of Nov- October, rest of October and November, um, and so I'm going to need help and guidance with this, um, for sure.
Yeah, it doesn't have to follow back to you.
Well, if you want to do it again.
I do follow back up to me.
What's that? Their ballots were very.
Talked about before the committees.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And we'd love to have the friends and foundation be part of it, um, as well. Okay, the last item I think that we need to cover is there, there's a correction on the next library board meeting as November 12, not November 19, so just note that, and we'll see you all.
Why, why did we change that?
Moved it because Manny and I are out of town.
Oh, you were out of town?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so this is our last board meeting with Manny.
Well, I will not be at the, the November meeting.
Okay.
Where you are, and please be.
Yeah, I'm not, I won't be there either. I'm out of town.
Um, if you.
So it's 12, so.
Um, well, I don't know now, like one, two, three. So should we look at another, another, I think we, let's look at another date, okay, right now?
So the reason why I couldn't be here in, in Agnene now would, would be attending is the Level Five Director Summit in Nashville.
Why pick that twenty?
And Bill Warren.
Yeah, yeah, completely out of town, yeah, which um I can be on. Do, how does November 19th look for everybody?
Yeah, that's the, the summit, yeah.
Yeah, okay. November 5th, that's Election Day. So I would imagine that this survey will be taken, is, is election.
Yeah, early elections uh begins actually tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Uh, through Halloween.
Do we have to meet on a Tuesday?
I know, I was wondering.
I don't think there's anything to say that we have to meet on a Tuesday. So not look at other days of the week besides Tuesday.
How does November 14th look for people?
That's just that Thursday, that's something. Yeah, I'm still at Disney. I ain't coming back. I'm taking my ride maybe to Disney next day and I'll.
Okay, well, how about the 21st?
November 21st.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
So I'm, which I'll be attending to make an ask.
That's right.
What about November 20th?
I'll be out of town.
Well, you guys threw some dates out there.
How about Monday, the 18th?
Are you in town, or are you?
I'm going to.
I'm occupied, otherwise I can't.
Can I skip to Monday, the 25th?
Someone else could have taken the minutes.
Monday nights, I don't, I don't stay. But if I'm the only one gone, then that's good.
So why can't we not do Election Day? Why can't we not do November 5th? What was the reason?
We can, I guess it's election.
Because like, nobody in here is infected. That's the, about the election, like nobody's gonna be celebrating around the city. I personally don't have dog in the fight on November 5th. You know what I'm saying?
Well, and actually, so traditionally, our meetings have run about an hour. This one's a little bit longer due to our discussions. Now, we will be discussing the selection process, you know, putting some good discussion around that. And then visiting some of the policies. Is there anything else big for that next agenda? I think if, if people want to be out and ready for election, we can be out and ready at 6:30 for you guys to watch the leveling results rolling.
We're just gonna go bad. That's usually what I did.
Okay.
I'm okay with the dance, if you, that's, that's.
Is, November 5th?
I'll be.
Oh, yeah.
And then nothing else.
Yeah, I'll be here for it.
I mean, if, if you would, if folks would like to move it to Fahy, we can propose that as well.
It's okay with me.
Would you guys like to do Fahy? Let's do that. Five o'clock. Um, um, November 5th. At 5:00 p.m., here. Okay, look at us being.
It took a while, but we can move it.
All right, if we can, we can add motion to the jury.
Some move.